Union Board of Education Organization Meeting. I am Yolanda Coon, School Business Administrator and Board Secretary, and I will be facilitating this meeting until such Board President is selected. At this time, I would like to call this meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the Oath of Office to our newly-elected Board Members will be administered by our Honorable Senator Cohn. The first member to be sworn in is Mr. Michael Cohen.
I'm ready. I, Michael Cohen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state. Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me.
I.
I. I. Again? We're repeating the whole thing? Oh, I got you. I didn't know. I. Michael Cohen.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member of a Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS 19.
RS 19.
Colon four dash one.
Colon four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to the conviction of a crime.
Due to the conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
Eighteen A.
Eighteen A.
Colon.
Colon.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to.
According to.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, you can sign. Next, we have Mrs. Elsie Conte Mackey. The nieces, because we have the nieces. Come on, Nisa. The spouse.
Hello, baby. The whole family already know. Congratulations.
The family. We're first generation.
I.
I. Elsie Conte Mackey.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
That I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Elsie Conte Mackey.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
And that I am not.
And that I am not.
Disqualified as a voter.
Disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Colon.
Colon.
Four dash one.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
Eighteen A.
Eighteen A.
Colon.
Colon.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Last, but not least, we have Mr. Ronnie McDowell.
I.
I, Ronnie McDowell.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of.
And the Constitution of.
The State of New Jersey.
The State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Ronnie McDowell.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of.
For the office of.
Member of a Board of Education.
Member of a Board of Education.
And that I am not.
And that I am not.
Disqualified.
Disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Colon.
Colon.
Four dash one.
Four dash one.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
Eighteen A.
Eighteen A.
Colon.
Colon.
Twelve dash one.
Twelve dash one.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And at this time, we'll allow for approximately five minutes for any kind of photo ops or pictures with your family. Ms. Carbonell?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Right here.
Mrs. Mackey? Mr. McDowell? Ms. McKenzie?
Here.
Mrs. Benisi?
Here.
Ms. Santana?
Present.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mrs. Capiella, the mission statement, please.
The mission of the Township of Union Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family, and community partnerships. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered, and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills, and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially, and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Thank you. The Open Publics Meeting Act Notice. In accordance with the provision of the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act, the Township of Union Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date time and place thereof published in the Star and Ledger and Union County local sources, posted in the Administrative Building of 2369 Morris Avenue in Union, New Jersey, filed with the Township Clerk, and mailed to all persons, if any, who have requested said notice. The Board of Education offers members of the Board an opportunity to address issues regarding items on the agenda or on any issues. Individuals need to identify themselves by name and address. Public comments are limited to three minutes. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of all individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the Board will not be responded to by the Board. At this time, we will have our attorney to provide the procedures and process for the nomination of Office of Presidency and VP.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Buggie, Board Attorney. I just want to congratulate our new Board Members, and just going to briefly go through the procedures for nomination and election of Board President and Board Vice President. Any Board Member may place a Board Member's name in nomination for Board President and Vice President. A second on the nomination is not required. Election for each office will be conducted by a vote when the nominations for the office are closed. Voting shall take place by verbal roll-call vote after the nominations are closed. When more than one person has been nominated for a single position, the Board will vote on the candidates in the order in which they are nominated. The person with the majority vote of all the members of the Board shall be elected. In the event no candidate receives a majority vote of all the members of the Board, the procedure shall be repeated until someone receives a majority vote of all members of the Board. If you cannot elect a President and a Vice President, we will go through the process again, and if you still cannot elect a President and a Vice President, the meeting will end, and we will have to contact the Executive County Superintendent, who will then select one of the members of the Board, or two, if we can't elect a President and a Vice President, to fill those positions, and then we will have a reorganization meeting. So with that brief summary of the process, I will allow Ms. Coon to open up the floor.
And with this statement, at this time, the floor is open for any nominations for the Office of President.
I nominate Chastity Santana.
Hearing and seeing no others, the nomination for Office of Presidency is closed. Mrs. Capiella, please take a roll call for.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Congratulations, Madam President. Please take your seat. And I yield the floor to you. I'm truly humbled by this tremendous opportunity. I want to thank my peers, constituents.
I want to thank my peers, constituents, residents, and the community for entrusting such a vital role to me today. Union farmers, I have a vision as President. Union farmers, we as the Board have a vision as well, and this vision is long, and it brings change, growth, and improvement. My predecessor has laid the groundwork for the next phase Union schools will go in. We will foster stability and grow Union to where we all know it can be. I wish I can say that it would all be done in this year, my President year, but realistically, we are laying the groundwork for our future farmers. I thought of that. Our future farmers will reap the benefits of all the work that we are doing today. There will also be much progress done this year. We will work collaboratively between this cohesive Board, our district administration, the township, community, and residents. My goal as President is to foster the continuing stability of our district while aligning the needs of our current school district. And with all that fun stuff being said, I would love to open the floor for nominations for Vice President.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Dixiana Carbonell.
Will the nominations be closed?
Hearing and seeing no others, the nomination for Office of Vice Presidency is now closed. Ms. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Ms. Santana? Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Madam President, and to our new Board members. I just want to say that I am looking, looking forward to working with all of you. New Superintendent as well, congratulations. And thank you, everyone, for entrusting us with such an important role. And I think I speak on behalf of everyone to say that we will be working together to make sure that our future, which is our children, have the best opportunities possible so that they can represent our society and lead the future, not only of Union, the state, but also the nation. Thank you so much, and let's have a wonderful and productive year, working together, our staff, leadership, parents, and community, and of course, on behalf of the children.
I would like to take this time to speak about what I would consider a legend in our community. I would like to speak about Mrs. Vernell Wright. She graduated from New York State College in 1965, which was then located in Union, New Jersey. She began her journey with the Township of Union Board of Education in 1967, starting as a tutorial teacher. During that same year, she transitioned to the role of a science teacher at Kwame School. And in 1971, Mrs. Wright took on the responsibilities of Science Department Supervisor, and subsequently advanced the position of Assistant Director of Community Relations in 1976. Two years later, she was appointed as the Director of Community Relations. In 1986, Mrs. Rice embraced an administrative role within the school system, assuming the position of Principal at Central Six Jefferson School, later renamed Central Five Jefferson School. Her final tenure as a Board of Education employee took place at Hannah Caldwell School, where she served as Principal from 1998 into her retirement on January 1st, 2003. Throughout her 37 years of service with the Township of Union Board of Education, Mrs. Vernell Wright excelled in various roles. Notably, she played a pivotal role in implementing the current preschool and full-day current kindergarten programs, and additionally, she served as the Head Start Director and Principal, leaving a lasting impact on the educational programs and community she served. After that, she went on to publicly serve as well. She passed on December 23rd, 2023, and I would like to take this moment of silence to think about all that she did for Union. Thank you. I would open the floor to comments from the public on resolutions and any other matters.
Ann Margaret Shannon, 2591 Spruce Street, UTA President. And I'm just very excited. Happy New Year to everyone. Very excited for a new year going forward. I appreciate all the new faces, and I was going to say old faces, but also everybody. But I do congratulate the new members. I think we're going to, I just feel a positive presence here tonight, and I look forward to making great strides in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. David Arminio, 1032 Woodland Avenue. And just a reminder that this Sunday, there's an open house at the Historical Society, the Caldwell Parsonage, from 2:00 to 5:00. There's a new display up on the second floor, and we have some new items that have never been seen before by the public. So, 2:00 to 5:00 this Sunday at the Caldwell Parsonage, 909 Caldwell Avenue. Have a wonderful year, everyone.
Any other public comments? Thank you. So, as we move on, may I have a motion to adopt New Jersey NJ SBA Code of Ethics? The Township of Union Board of Education adopts the School Code of Ethics for the 2024 calendar year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order as the official procedure manual to be used to conduct meetings for the 2024 calendar year?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve meeting nights? Approve the schedule of committee meetings, work sessions, and regular meetings to be adopted in accordance with the schedule in the hands of each Board member, and be it further moved that copies be posted in the administration building, and the township clerk and copies be sent to the Star Ledger and Union County Local Source for publication.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the policy manual of the Township of Union Board of Education presently in effect by hereby be hereby readopted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Madam President, I can interrupt for a minute. As Superintendent, I started to review the policy manual, knowing we were readopting it tonight, and there was so far two policies I would like for consideration, actually one bylaw and one policy that I would like consideration as a first reading. I did hand them out. One is very minor of a change. The other one is dealing Policy 54, 8454 with recent issues in the district. This policy is outdated based on CDC guidelines and recommendations from the state. I would like that updated to match our medical plan that we have already been approved, as well as Bylaw 0142, changing back to what the statute is six months in towards the end of the policy, right before Code of Ethics. As far as that, I could read it, a Board member cannot be appointed to a paid office position required and filled by the Board of Education, by the Board, except where law permits or requires that the office of position be filled by a Board member and is ineligible for the appointment to be paid office or position in the district for at least, instead of the two years, which several years ago was changed, and under, when I was reviewing this, it was under my understanding that it was brought back to the six months is what the statute is. So that would be the change in that one, and there's, again, dealing with the medical issues in our district, striking the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, start at the 6th paragraph, number 1 through 3.
Is there any discussion?
I was just going to say, Madam President,
Oh, thank you.
there should be a motion to approve the amended Bylaw 142 and Policy 8454 for the first reading, and then another motion at the next reading.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve designation of official newspapers? The adoption of the former resolution is in the hands of each Board member, designating the Union County Local Source and the Star Ledger's newspapers to receive notice of meetings, and tap into Union as the electronic newspaper, to receive notice of meetings, and fixing charges for notices to the public meetings in the amount of $60 for 2024.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve designation of Internet website for official notification? We're approving the adoption of the former resolution designating the Township of Union Board of Education's Internet website, www.twpunionschools.org, for the official notification pursuant to the New Jersey Local Unit Pay-to-Pay Law in accordance with the information of the hands of each Board member.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve designation of depositories for funds of the Township of Union Board of Education, school activity funds? We're approving the designation of Connect One Bank, Citizens Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and Unity Bank as depositories for funds of the Township of Union Board of Education as currently maintained in accordance with the list in the hands of each Board member. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve authorization of depository banks to honor and charge accounts of Township of Union Board of Education, and all Board of Education checks and drafts bearing the stamp of perforation commonly known as the facsimile signature of the treasurer of school monies and the president of the Board of Education, and that checks and drafts of the various Board of Education accounts be signed by designated officers in accordance with the list in the hands of each Board member, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve authorization of the school business administrator to approve payment of bills between board meetings on an as-needed basis in accordance with NJ SA 18A:19-4.1 for the 2024 calendar year?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve list of financial vendors? May I have a motion to approve list of financial vendors, including flex spending 403B companies doing business with the Township of Union Board of Education in accordance with the list in the hands of each board member?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes. And we will move into unfinished business. We will move into new business.
Madam President?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
No, this is new business.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to welcome our new board members. Thank you for dedicating yourselves to the Board of Ed. Congratulations to Mrs. Santana and Ms. Carbonell for your leadership. Congratulations to Dr. Benacquista, and let's have a great year.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to welcome our new board members, too. And I have to say, we've been talking about how much work we have to do, but seriously, look at this team. Look at these board members, the experience, the commitment, the dedication. So, we do have a lot of work to do, but I'm excited because we're gonna kill it.
Thank you for your comment. Any other new business? Yes?
Echoing what my fellow colleague said, I want to welcome our new board members. I want to say congratulations to Madam President and Madam Vice President. Jerry, again, congratulations to you. I look forward to working with you, our community at large, our parents, our stakeholders, and particularly our educators, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you.
So I'll piggyback off of what everybody else said, and say congratulations to Madam President and Madam Vice President. Looking very forward to working with all of you and serving with you. And yes, there is a lot, a lot of work to do, but I believe we are going to have a lot of fun getting it all done, and I'm looking forward to it all. And congratulations to our new board members as well. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Might I have a moment of personal privilege?
Yes.
Sowabona sekoná. I am here. I see you. This is a Zulu greeting that assures that people meeting for the first time, that the greeter acknowledges that they will be fully present for conversation, for understanding, and for community. I see the citizens and voters of Union who have honored me by selecting me to serve them on this board. I see the children, their children, our students, that they've entrusted to us for their education. I also see the members of the district staff, who expect us to support them and provide the resources they need to provide that education. Some may ask whether being on this board is the attainment of a long-sought goal. It is not. It is merely the next step on a journey of learning and service to the people of Union. As I begin this next step, I'm deeply aware that I stand on the shoulders of those who come before me, people like Roosevelt Williams, Charlene Holden, Dorothy Jean Jamison, Ron Manzella, Richard Galanti, and David Arminio. I remember the colleagues and leaders who helped me to build the skills and knowledge I'll need to work with my board colleagues, and I remember the first leader who taught me of the importance of service, my late father, Bernard Cohen. Thank you to Senator Cryon for presiding over my installation, and I want to thank all of my friends and family who are here tonight to support me, especially my mom, Elaine Cohen, my sister Patricia Benvenuto, and my most important partner, without whom I'd never accomplish anything, my wife Melinda Zito. Once again, I'm profoundly honored to join my colleagues here at this board table. I am here to begin the important work before us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President and Madam Vice President, congratulations. I would also like to echo, I've heard many board members making statements of working with leadership, and I am echoing, I am very excited for this board that is coming in and the board members that are returning to continue this onward, and like Ms. Scott Heaton said, the boat has sailed
Yes.
last month, and that, what Ms. Scott Heaton said, I've reflected on a lot since the last meeting, and it's so true. And I'm looking forward to going on this journey and on this boat together and striving to make our district the best. Thank you all.
Senator, congratulate you, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Just one more.
Madam Vice President, Madam President, say thank you to everybody in here tonight. I'm sorry for the tears. It's just really an amazing feeling to be sitting up here. It has been a 10-year journey of countless long nights with our BOE meetings and just really working hard to be an advocate for the special education and disabilities of our students and wonderful angels of Union, and watching Julian Holt Bible just really brought it all back to me. I am so happy to be working among an amazing people. I want to thank all of the previous and incoming BOE members who laid a foundation. You all really have Michael, myself, and Ronnie walking into a real stable environment, and I can say that wholeheartedly because I've been coming for 10 years, and I look forward to working with you, Jerry. I'm so happy for you. You know, it's a little bit worse now because we have bigger expectations of you, but I'm confident that you can succeed. You know, we get no breaks from me. And I also want us to acknowledge, we have two Latinas sitting at the helm as President and Vice President, and I think that that is a first in this district, and that shows you how far we have come. To my husband and my children, thank you so much for making those sacrifices, and to my husband who will be Tuesday nights with kids, shout out. There's no difference, right? He's used to it. And to my sisters and my nieces, we are first-generation kids, immigrant parents who are looking for a better life for their children, and here we are collectively together, sitting here, I'm on the So when you see us, we're all a family, but I speak for my mother and father, Albert and Olive, from Sierra Leone, West Africa, in the 70s, not telling my age, but that is what makes up this diverse community of Union, and that is why this makes it even more better. So, thank you all, and definitely, I'm looking forward to an amazing year working together.
Madam President, just a couple of words, and I do want to thank everyone here for this opportunity once again to be on this board. I've been on and off for the past eight, nine years, but like most of you, like all of you, I'm looking forward to what we will accomplish in the years to come. I've seen, well, I graduated from this high school, so I know what it can be, and I know what we are looking forward to making it into, and school has changed a lot from when I graduated to now. It's a whole different environment, but I think we have the people here with the knowledge, with the commitment, with the, I guess, the go-gettness that we will accomplish what it is we're looking to do, and that's simply to make our school district better. And I remember something that, that Madam President said not too long ago. She said she would like to hear people say, "and the school district," not "but the school district." And so we want people to say, "Union is a nice place to buy a home, and the school district is outstanding."
Yes.
That's what we're looking to become, and I think, once again, that we have the people in place to accomplish just that. Thank you all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Ms. Carbonell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Benisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Heaton?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.